Moore.
Here.
O'Kane.
Here.
Shaner.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Waters.
Here.
We stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could Terry and Brian Ellison come to the podium there?
How are you today? The proclamation that whereas the Salvation Army exists can be human, need whenever, wherever, and however they can. Salvation Army exists approximately twenty-three million individuals can and can be expanded to a hundred thirty-one people worldwide. Whereas the Salvation Army does provide emergency services, rent and utility assistance, new programs, adult care, tree growth days, disaster services, athletic programs, and foster kids, school supply drive, and much more. Whereas the holiday season, the Salvation Army Saultana affects, we agree in the Minnesota region. The red cattle team, the Salvation Army Saultana, are the best in the country. donations, collect the earnings from, stay open for valuable funding. The our year end, and as before, our robbery, the governor of Sioux City, so the half of the county. You hereby proclaim November 10th the December 1st of the direction of the government's. In the dollar, this is just a little, and then related to the holiday season. At the event, you say a few words if you would.
The red kettle is a national Christmas icon since 1891. That familiar ringing will be heard all around Saultana again this year from Friday till ever fourteen through Christmas Eve. So the donations in the kettle not only assist local families during the Christmas season, but in every month of the calendar year. From birth to senior, from food to summer camp, we have been serving Saultana since 1888. One ringer for one shift can help to feed up to six families for one week. The red kettle and other Christmas giddings account for one-third of the overall budget.
We won't make you start over if you don't want to.
Well, the most important part. Thank you for taking the time to recognize this important and festive event. Please join us for our annual kickoff on Saturday, November 15th at two o'clock in Southern Hill Hall.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Interview for the Human Rights Commission, Sandra Bass. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve.
I'm pretty sure I know most everybody out there. I've been aware of the Human Rights Commission since I moved back to Sioux City in 1986. And it's just something I've always found kind of noble and admirable to serve on. I have a lot of experience with the different issues that the Human Rights Commission handles. And now that I'm getting old enough, I have a few things off my plate, and I'm going to be a nester. I think it would be the time to do that.
Questions?
Excellent.
Thanks for making the application.
That's the best time to take on more, is when you retire.
All right, thank you.
I appreciate your service. Thanks, Sandra.
We'll go to the consent agenda, which is items three through 12. Consider them to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call voters request back out. Anybody wishing to speak on an agenda item may come to the podium at the time that item is read. Anyone wanting to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. All speakers shall state their name for the record and then provide their statement, limiting it to three minutes. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Reading of the October 29th and November 3rd City Council Minutes. Vote four is a motion appointing and reappointing Sandra Serbinagel to the Gillian Kosovo Sister City Committee. Five is a resolution scheduling a hearing on the Highway 75 Water Main Upsized Project State Revolving Fund Environmental Review Process. Six is a resolution amending the Position Classification Manual for the Utility Inspector Position. Seven are actions relating to grants and donations. A is a resolution authorizing the execution of a request for a release of funds and certification of environmental review in conjunction with the Community Development Block Grant Program. B is a resolution accepting a donation from the Sioux City Public Library Foundation. Eight are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a cooperative agreement between the Iowa Office of Civil Rights and the Human Rights Commission for cross filing complaints pursuant to the Iowa Code. B is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with C M B A Architects for the Police Department Storage Facility Project. C is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with Plant Architecture for the Midtown Terrace Project. D is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with D G R for the Midtown Terrace Site Improvement Project.
Mayor, before we go on, can we talk about?
Mm-hmm.
Eight, please. A lot of people either in the room or watching that review these meetings may or may not know about this project. It's a $5 million housing project. It's up on 13th, is it Jill? And Douglas. What it's going to consist of is seventeen transitional housing apartments. Is that the right term?
Yes.
And then seven individual independent condos?
Apartments.
Apartments, too. To help those who have experienced homelessness and are in the transition of getting out of homelessness. I cannot commend Jill's department for putting this together. She is doing the work to get these bids, putting out these requests for proposals to put this deal together. And there are so many regulations when the money comes from IFA and from other entities, our home funds, et cetera. We're going to be filling a gap with a million dollars, million plus, to put this together. I think we got three point.
About 3.9.
3.9 from IFA. So we have to come up with some more funds to match that. And these are all forgivable grants, correct?
Yep, Jill Waterside Neighborhood Services Manager. The thing I like to highlight about this project is exactly what Councilmember Shaner was saying, is that it's all funded with grants. Those are federal grants. So the 3.9 coming from the state of Iowa, that is a federal funding source. And then also, our home funds is also a federal grant. So bringing that money into Sioux City and building much-needed housing, we'll have 24 units total, as Julie was saying. Seven of those will be a traditional affordable housing units. And then the rest will be those units for those that are experiencing homelessness and transitioning to being housed. So the units themselves, the typical building, it'll look like a typical apartment building. It'll look really nice on the site and blend in with the neighborhood very well, too. And there'll be case management onsite as well to help those living there. So it'll be a great thing, I think, for our community.
Right, they'll have some support onsite. So if there's ever a crisis or something that they need, they'll have someone there that they can turn to. And, you know, it'll build up that neighborhood to have some new structures there and not oversize that it can't be managed. And so I'm just so passionate about this project, and I thank you so much, you and your team. Because as we can see, just these checkmarks today is a lot. That's just the tip of the iceberg. So thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
E is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with D G R Engineering for the 13th Street Storm Sewer Improvement Project. Nine are actions authorizing payments. A is a resolution authorizing payment to Mark Albinicious for the Emergency Old Bacon Creek Sanitary Sewer Repair Project. B is a resolution authorizing payment to R P Constructors for the Riverside Boulevard and Hornick Avenue Sanitary Manhole Emergency Project. C is a resolution authorizing payment to Safe Slide Restoration for the Riverside Pool Slide Restoration Project. Ten are actions relating to property. A is a resolution proposing to lease property to Imon Communications to maintain fiber optic cables in exchange for internet and Wi-Fi services at Cone Park. B is a resolution inviting proposals to sell land in the combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area, announcing the intent to accept the proposal of Knife River Midwest, and scheduling a hearing, a portion of the property lying east of Hawkeye Drive, west of Floyd Boulevard, and north of 18th Street. Go ahead, Marty.
Mayor and Council, Marty Doherty, Economic and Community Development Director. Chris Winkle is here from Knife River as well today to answer any questions that you might have. Mike and I thought maybe it'd be good to go through a few of the elements of this because it is a fairly complex, a great project. It's a fairly complex series of transactions. And today is just the first step of, there'll be a hearing in 30 days for the agreement. But I thought I would run through it, and I'll reference the map that you see on the screen. So there are a number of things happen here. So the first one is an initial sale of property. So Knife River is going to be buying city property. The first part, the initial sale will take place by the end of this year for $205,000. That's based on appraised value. And that would be the area that's shown in red there, except the ball fields. The next sale will take place by August 1 of 2027, which would be the Headed Ball Fields area. Appraised value there, they will pay that at $495,000. And then there's a street there, Chase Avenue, which would be included in that, would be vacated. And then, as obviously Headed is a big concern here, and they are important to us, and they would be moving to a new location to be determined. And Knife River has agreed to help with that move, either by providing $500,000 in cash over and above the purchase price of the land, or in-kind paving of a parking lot, which of course they have some expertise in. So that would be more than that, probably around $765,000. Again, that would be determined later as the plans develop.
And Marty, Headed is very much in favor of this project.
Headed is very excited about getting some new ball fields. Obviously, they want input, and we've been meeting with them about where it will be and what it will look like, and so on. The area, I might just refer to the Illinois Avenue area there in yellow that you see. We will vacate 18th Street, or excuse me, Illinois Avenue from 18th Street to south of 19th, and sell that to Knife River for a dollar. In return, they will sell us those lots along there, right along Illinois, that you see in yellow, for a dollar. And they will pave that because as part of the rail line, which I'll get to in a second, some city parking, employee parking will be displaced. So it will be moved over to that yellow area. And then we will also purchase a lot on 1806 Hawkeye, that one lot that kind of extends to the west there, for $23,000. That's for additional storage space for parks and recreation.
Correct.
Different uses. So then getting to the rail line, a key component of Knife River's expansion is a rail spur and a rail yard, which is a very large undertaking, very expensive undertaking. And they will do it in two phases. And we will lease them the ground that runs close to 18th Street to run that spur for a period of 50 years. And then they will build Phase 1, which will go over to along the south up to where they will have a conveyor system prior to the end of '26. The Phase 2 construction will be after the Headed purchases completed and will take and build the rest of the rail spur and a rail line up to the north there where the ball fields are. Some other elements to this, and again, you may have a bunch of questions, and that's fine. I try to hit some of the highlights here. We will, of course, retain permanent utility easements throughout the site. There are a lot of utilities in that area. There are some issues that relate to stormwater retention, which both Knife River and the city have struggled with for a number of years. We're going to work together to resolve those. Eventually, if the city field services moves off the site entirely, which we don't know the future there, but we are going to provide Knife River with the right of first refusal if the city ever decided to sell the rest of the property. Because of our funds available for rail construction, we will assist Knife River in applying for funds for the rail crossing. They have agreed they will create approximately 20 new jobs. There's a bunch of other things that relate to the operation of a rail line. But essentially, I will say that Knife River will construct that within three years. And they will be responsible for the maintenance upkeep improvements and so on. They will put street-grade crossings on the city property in the areas you see circled there in purple. And has been reported already, but they've agreed to work with the city closely. Try to have coordinate train traffic after 4:00 PM and provide at least one week notice of train traffic, which is bringing in primarily aggregate into their facility and the other materials, construction materials. They've agreed they will construct the infrastructure that's needed along the existing drainage ditch. They will encase utilities under Illinois Avenue so they wouldn't be damaged by the rail cars. And then one final thing, in the purple area there, they will create, in the event there is a train that's blocking traffic, an alternate access point to Illinois Avenue and 19th Street, and make those improvements as well. So that's covering a lot of ground, I realize that. There's a lot of elements to this. But Knife River has been very good to work with. We've worked for many months now to come up with a plan that would work for everyone involved. And I would ask Chris if he would like to say a few words from Knife River. Chris Winkle.
Sir, I apologize, we're having issues with that microphone. Can you use one of them?
Yeah, sure.
Chris Winkle with Knife River Midwest, 2220 Hawkeye Drive. Yeah, I'd like to thank Marty and Mike and Renee and Chris. It's been a long process. As you can see, there's a lot of elements to it. But I feel like we've come up with a good plan here, and we're really excited to move forward and also help with the relocation of those ball fields. So yeah, I mean, we are very excited to get this project going. And I guess this is the first step. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Chris, I want to thank you for working with city staff as well as you have, and also showing the respect for Headed Little League Ball Fields. You've just have done just a really tremendous support there. And we really have appreciated that, that it's a team effort, and you work together with them, and you work with the city staff. So thank you, Chris, for doing that.
Yeah, you're, yeah, thank you very much, and you're welcome. And the city utilities as well has been great, Brad and his team. Because we had to work through a lot of details there. But, you know, we're committed to working together on this. I know there's a little bit of a transition period here. But we feel like it's going to be a great project and good for the city. And I feel like we're in the right spot, too, so.
Chris and Marty, I mean, first off, I would just echo some of those comments. I know this has been a long process. You both have, I think, had to exercise patience in trying to work through this. I think that it's multifaceted, obviously, a lot of moving parts and things to work through and trying to be creative. I appreciate that creativity in trying to come up with various solutions. I think that that's important. And hopefully, the thought is that then you can come to, you know, a good situation for everyone involved, where, you know, we can move these ball fields that I think are, have been needed, updating and needing to move for quite some time. And so, but then I also think it's allowing you to expand and expand an operation that we really obviously value here in our community and want you to be able to do that and do that here in Sioux City. And I think the connectivity of this corridor just makes sense. And I appreciate that flexibility and creativity. What I will say is the concern that I have, and I've voiced this a number of different times, is just with that fields or the streets division, as well as parks and rec, the utilization of that land and all the people that are going to be going back and forth to their offices, to those sites, whether it's getting in their vehicle or whether it's getting materials and things like that. And I think for me, I also appreciate the willingness that, you know, you saying, "Look, we'll try to give you a week notice and keep them after hours or as much as possible." I just, it's tough that you want assurances. Or at least just, you know, what does that look like if we're unable to meet that? You know, if we're unable to give you notice, like a week's notice, maybe the schedules are out far enough where that's not a big deal. I'm naive to that. But the concern that I have is, you know, I know that they can come at different times or, you know, whatever's going to work best for your operation. And I think if there's a plan in place to move those buildings or those resources and that's somewhat more solidified, which there is, I mean, obviously, I know it's our intention to hopefully do that. But without a timeline, it causes me concern. Where I don't want to put any of the men or women working for the city down in that site, whether it's just crossing over this that many times during the day and rolling their ankle or tripping on it over the snow. I know you'll maintain it, I understand. But I just, I worry about that inconvenience and the problem that that could cause without like a solidified plan of, well, look, within five years, this is where they will be moving and giving our men and women that work down there at least some confidence that they're not going to have to deal with that long term.
And I think that's, you know, as we were going through this, that's one of the reasons, as far as that, like that parking area and then the alternate access, you know, that so folks could, you know, always get out. And then the new parking area, like I said, will be paved and actually fairly close to where they need to go to try to address that, you know, if there is a train. And like, basically, the trains will come April through November-ish, kind of during, like, the winter months. Trains won't be in there. And, you know, we're anticipating like one train a week. So with the ability, with those ball fields, it gives us the room to, you know, get that train all the way in there so it's, you know, as it comes in, it doesn't sit in front of that crossing.
And I know you've looked at different configurations with that, too.
But it's, you know, like, obviously, the first couple of years will be, you know, as we transition over, there's, those will be a little bit tougher. But yeah, I think with just communication that we can make this happen.
And I guess one thing, then, that your answer or response kind of prompted my mind thinking about, will we be responsible for clearing, say, the snow and stuff in the winter months on those tracks or in that area? I mean, to be able to make it more safe for our employees? Are we responsible? Is Knife River going to be responsible?
So like, yeah, in the winter months, we won't have trains. But like those crossings, if you would envision, you know, like an asphalt crossing or a concrete crossing on city street, it's going to be, you know, to that design standard.
Yeah, in level, and I know that they make that so they're not big gaps.
So it won't be like it'll be walking over the tracks or, you know, bouncing. I mean, it'll have an at-grade crossing.
Yeah.
That meets all the standards, so.
And then as far as clearing that is my question. Because like, obviously, our city streets are cleared with the plows or, you know, different areas in there. How do we anticipate at least then getting those people across those tracks if that's your property?
I mean, I'd say just like any other track in town, right? You just, you know, you can drive a plow over it, and they have ones with sidewalks that you can walk over, so.
I would anticipate we would still clear that space, like we always have.
We're just leasing the property.
Yeah.
Yeah. It should be pretty, like I said, there'll be crossings, like, so it won't be like you'll have to drive over the tracks. It'll be like a nice, smooth, or smooth as all the other ones in town, at-grade crossing. So I don't foresee that.
Yeah, and you will see all that language in the final agreement, Alex. You know, it covers those maintenance items. But I just go back to what you said before. We did look at alternate train routes through here, as you know, several different options. And this was the only one that would really work because of requirements of curvature of track and those kinds of things, so.
And I think that makes sense. And I do appreciate and know that we need to move the ball fields as well. But it's like I want that same preference given to moving the city staff and their resources or, you know, their work site so that they can feel safe and confident, or at least giving them a timeline. And so, and Chris, at least, I feel like you know me well enough. I'm just trying to think through my thought process and just make sure that we're thinking about our employees and the people that are going to be there. And so we're trying to make sure that in the agreement at least, that we can hold you accountable, just like you can hold us accountable.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chris. I appreciate it.
C is a resolution inviting proposals for the lease of land in the combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area, announcing the intent to accept the proposal of Knife River Midwest, and scheduling a hearing, a portion of the property lying east of Hawkeye Drive, west of Floyd River, and north of 18th Street. 12 are applications for alcohol licenses. 12, I'm sorry, 11 are applications for alcohol license. 12 are commission minutes. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Seeing none, voting electronically today? Passes 5013, the hearing and resolution approving construction documents for the 6th Street Bridge Reconstruction, the Bridge Deck Replacement Project. I'll move that. Second. Hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 50. Recommendations of planning and zoning. 14 is a motion acknowledging the Board of Adjustment actions of October 28th. I'll move that. Second.
Yeah, I just, I'd like to visit about Agenda Item 2025-096 on the 1123, 1125 Nebraska Street for the commercial use of that property. It seemed like there were some very valid objections that were made to the Board of Adjustment. And if it's appropriate and proper, Mayor, I'd like to remand the action back to the Board of Adjustment for further consideration of the businesses that are around there, the Warming Shelter, the Saultana Community Health Center, and other, and Hope Street, and related services that are provided like that. Not speaking against a grocery store downtown, I think one is definitely needed, but maybe without the no alcohol sales. So I would just respectfully request that the Board of Adjustment take a look at that a second time. And I would make that motion.
I'll second it.
And this, for clarification, just for anyone listening in for this, this is just remanding it back for further consideration. It's not redirecting. I mean, we've done that before. It's just asking them to take an additional look at this, right?
Correct. Yep, for the Board of Adjustment, that's correct.
And they might arrive at the exact same recommendation, it's just asking them to consider.
Could be a different.
Or it could be different, yeah, exactly, either way.
Go ahead.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner. Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
You still have to vote on the motion. You still have to vote electronically on the original motion.
Original motion, yeah. Yeah, because we're just remanding that one agenda item.
Passes 5015, the hearing and ordinance vacating a portion of 28th Street adjacent to 5528th Street. The petitioner is Mid-America Energy, Ryan Stansberry. P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move that. Second. Public hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 50. Is anybody opposed waiving the statutory rule?
No.
Second.
Shaner. Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Move second.
Second.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
16, the hearing and ordinance vacating a portion of the alley abutting 1705 and 1715 John Street, and a portion of the alley abutting 2101, 2115, 2117, 2121 West 17th Street. Petitioner is Michael Dolan. P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move that. Second. Public hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed.
You put the right name on it when you filled it out, right? Yeah, I'm just kidding.
Passes 50. Is anybody opposed waiving the statutory rule? I'll move that. Second.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner. Shaner.
Move second.
Second.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Seventeen's a hearing and ordinance rezoning forty-seven oh seven Stone Park Boulevard. The petitioner's Tanner Lambert. P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed.
Hold up. Nope, never mind. I just want to make sure.
Passes five zero. Anybody opposed waiving the statutory rule? I'll move it. Second.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner. Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Second, third.
Second.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott. Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Eighteen's an ordinance rezoning thirty-seven hundred Jefferson Street. The petitioner's Dolph Ivner. P&amp;Z recommends an aisle deferred from October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. First consideration was approved on November third, twenty twenty-five. Someone will need to move second reading. I'll move that.
Second.
Second.
Dolph, is he here?
Yeah.
You want to speak first, Julie said, maybe?
Dolph, will you speak at one of these microphones? We're having troubles with that one. I'm sorry.
I would like to get a, a one-week deferral for... I have a, maybe a couple other options going, and I'd like a week time to work on it.
And do you need him to say his name or are you okay?
Oh, I'm, yes, please.
Dolph Ivner, thirty-four hundred Talbot Road.
I'll move that we defer for a week.
Second that.
Means that they will have a deferral. I don't want you folks in the audience to all have to keep coming back. I don't think that's fair to anybody.
Right.
You have two people that want to speak, and I guess I would, because they filled out cards, we need to allow them to do that. And then when they get done, at least we'll raise hands again. How many? Four. I, I do want to clarify one thing that I get asked a lot. This property does not connect to Jefferson Street, just so everybody knows that. That would be a concern for a lot of folks out in Leeds. I get it, but I wanted to make sure you understand it does not connect to Jefferson Street. So there won't necessarily be traffic. And that does make it easier for a lot of you. I understand, but I want to clarify that, so.
Mayor, could I, could I just clarify something for myself? I, I have several comments to make, but I think I'll wait till next week when we actually have the, the public hearing. Would that be appropriate?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Tim Doherty.
Good afternoon. I'm Tim Doherty. Thank you. My wife's family and her extended family have been Leeds residents for over eighty years. After I got out of the Army, I moved into Leeds, have been a homeowner for over forty years myself. With, we, everybody knows that the increase, or if you make something industrial behind, in that property, it's going to devalue all of the, all of the property along Floyd Boulevard that is directly connected to it. So if you ever walk back that trail, there the property is and here's the houses. I mean, it's, it's going to create more traffic along Floyd Boulevard. It doesn't matter if they come in or not of Forty-first Street. Everybody knows it's going to create more traffic. During the summer, it's going to create all kinds of traffic up on Highway seventy-five where the water park is going to be. So I don't want to get carried away, but what I would like to ask is the people that voted no, they're nay, please, before you vote again, think about what if your family or your extended family was going to be in that situation? So, and Bob Scott, thank you very much.
It'd be the people who voted yes, because those of us have voted no.
Right, the people who voted against it. Right, we don't want it.
It's confusing.
It is confusing the way it passed.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The other person that filled out a card is Deb Elgert. You need to come to this one, Deb.
Thank you.
Can I hand these out?
And you need to say your name, too, don't forget.
My name is Deb Elgert. I live in the Leeds area, and public speaking is my biggest nightmare.
You'll be fine.
Well, I just hope that I can convey how much this wa, this pathway that the city has spent so much money on. I bike that, I walk that, I've taken grandchildren there. People meet me from other areas and parts of town or even from out of town, and we enjoy that beautiful walkway. If you change that from commercial to industrial, you're going to destroy that area. There's so much monies there. There's so much beauty there. I wish that you would each take a walk down there before you make your final vote and to see what it, how it will really impact us. Right now, my property butts up against one of the schools. There's, sometimes there's traffic jams so bad that you're waiting in line for a whole stoplight to turn off on those streets. We know that the other end will be blocked by trains at times, and they'll, I know the desired effort would be to use Lewis Boulevard, but that's not always going to be available, and that's going to bring a lot more people, a lot more heavy traffic in a tight-knit community that wasn't built for that. We don't have the great big wide, you know, streets like you do down Riverside Boulevard and that. We have, you know, still have parking on one side. I just ask that you please take time and really see that if it was your family that lived in that area, would it change your opinion? I really do believe it would. Thank you.
Thank you.
You did great, Deb.
Thank you.
We'll do a show of hands again. Those that are in favor of the project, if any in the audience, please raise your hand. I know Dolph is, but is there anybody else? Those that are opposed. And I hate to have you guys keep coming back. I don't think that's fair, but in light of the fact that there may be a request to not rezone, I guess from my standpoint, worth a week's wait to hopefully something like that can happen. So thank you for coming and hopefully Dolph will get something going this next week and you won't have to come back. So thank you for coming. And that means that we have to, no, we have to vote on the deferral, so go ahead.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Citizen concerns. Any citizen to be heard on any item? Go ahead.
Could you please use one of these? We're having troubles with that microphone.
All right. My name's Nick Hogan, lifelong Sioux City resident. I know you guys are all aware of this flower deal around the storm super manholes. Could I just get some input on how we're handling that first, I guess, and maybe the process that led us to that point?
The chief here? Well, I'll just be the little bit I know. I know, I don't know what's going on.
And, and I'm not asking about the individual who did it or anything. I'm, I'm concerned with how the city's handling, you know.
Well, we don't handle misdemeanors or anything like that, just...
No, I'm talking about the removal and everything else with it.
Right, I understand that, but they don't call us, they don't email us or notify us, hey, we had a misdemeanor, we picked somebody up.
No, I'm not, I'm not, yeah, I'm not.
So the handling, that's part of it, but the police department does.
I'm talking about the, the street itself.
We're not going to do anything with those that are there.
Yeah, we already put a stop on it.
Winter will take care of those. We're not, the snowplows will take care of those, so those that are there now are staying.
We won't be removed.
Yeah, we already put a stop on that.
All right, well, I'm, I'm really glad to hear that after I saw what it was going to cost.
Yeah.
So, so here's, here's why I came here today. I just got to pull this up so I can remember it. So I called KTIV, and they told me that since late September, the Sioux City Police Department, Sioux City Street Division, Parks and Recs, and one other department, I don't know what it was, she didn't remember, all were doing a private investigation in regards to these flowers being painted on the street.
At, at, as a complaint from someone in the news media.
A complaint?
Somebody would call in and say...
It all generated because of someone in the news media filed a complaint.
And then there were actually two property owners that had called saying that they didn't want that on the street in front of their, that someone was vandalizing the street in front of their house.
Right.
And leaving spray.
Police didn't get involved until there were complaints filed.
Does the city only address graffiti if it's called in, or do they address it if they see it?
We've got, it goes around and redoes buildings as soon as we know about it.
Because I, I took a picture right off Lincoln Way on the South Coral and Lincoln Way intersection. There's a huge graffiti mark on the sidewalk, and the city workers actually mow that because that's, you know, city property every week, and it's been there for a long, long time. And, and I, I'm not up here for that. I, I'm up here because when I read that and I found out how much effort went into that, you know, finding who was painting flowers, I understand it's illegal and I'm not condoning that, but I myself, I, I own a business here in town. I grew up in this town. My, my dad's owned a business in this town for thirty years. I have had so much theft and vandalism this year, and I know I'm not alone. There's other contractors. I, I do work for five hundred different people a year, half probably contractors, half homeowners. I mean, I, every day, we spend a half hour barricading our trailers, our equipment. I mean, I, I'm terrified. You know, I just had a trailer stolen. It's going to, even though I have insurance, it's going to cost me eight thousand dollars to replace it. Not your guys' problem. I get it. But I mean, when I read that and I looked at the amount of effort that went into that, it's, you know, kind of feels like a slap in the face. I mean...
I'm not going to say anything because I'm, I had a long weekend exchanging emails. I'll just leave it at that, okay?
Well, I'm just telling you, between myself, a guy I do a lot of work for who's in the chair, you guys know him well, and another person who's doing a lot for the city right now, in, in one week, we had well over a hundred thousand dollars taken from us. I mean, like that, and we can't do anything about it. We get up for work in the morning and we're just out. We're just out.
One thing I will say just in response is I share the frustration. I actually thought the same thing or similar thing where, because I've seen an influx or a skyrocketing amount of graffiti in the community in just various areas, and I would love to make an example of these people that are tagging or going around doing all of this and finding those individuals. And I understand that theft is also a major problem.
It's huge. It's, you have no idea how many people don't even call because it doesn't do anything.
And I'm saying, and I'm saying I do understand, and I, I am frustrated for you with that as well. I will say that the difference here is they had a call that...
No, I, I understand that.
Well, let me finish.
Okay.
They had a call that the individual was actively doing it.
Right.
And then they were able to go out there and find the individual to assess that. If, if the same would happen during a theft, they would be able to do the same thing. Unfortunately, sometimes the theft doesn't, or the owner doesn't know.
So, so here's a prime example. So I had my truck with my name on the side of it stolen in the front of my house, right in the front of it, and I went out in the middle of the night as it was happening because my wife was up with our newborn. I chased them down, got my truck back. Police show up. I give them an exact description, make and model. I found this out later because it was in the midst of the middle of the night. I give them an exact description, make and model of the car that was with my truck leaving. And when the officer got there, I told him that. I said, are you going to go look for that car? And they said, well, that, that's a very common car. There could be a million of them on the road. And I said, on a Sunday morning at three AM, there's that many cars out on the road that match that description? I, I think anybody out at three in the AM is pretty suspicious on a Sunday morning, like especially that make and model if I gave it to them. Fast forward, trailer gets stolen. They, they come out to take the report, and it's just like, you can tell they're just, they're just going through the motions because they see it every day, you know? And I'm not blaming the officers. I, I get it's frustrating, but i, if we can, if we can handle this flower issue like this, I mean, can you imagine what we could do? I mean, you know, if somebody's out between midnight and five AM and they're in a new development, they shouldn't be there. I mean, there's no reason, right? I mean, if you guys have some insight as to how this is happening and we can't, we can't find these people or we can't do anything, then please help me, but I just feel helpless.
I wish I had an answer. I don't.
Do you think there're...
Like I said, I had a tough weekend.
Local people doing it or people coming from other cities? Or, I mean, have you got any?
I had a trailer stolen from me. I went on the marketplace. This was a couple years ago. Guy in Riverside selling it two days later as a homemade trailer. It's two, it's a two five sixteen, so it's got a title. Selling it as a homemade because all you got to do is go to the courthouse and say it's a homemade trailer. And thankfully, I had a title because he spray painted all of the stuff to make it look like it was different.
I, I think it doesn't really matter who or where they're from because they know nothing happens. I mean, I, I've had a lot of things stolen and I've went and found them on my own, and when I find them, they actually don't arrest them because they can't prove they've taken it. So...
Same thing happened here because they, he said he bought it from somebody else and...
Yeah. So I, I don't know what the solution is, but it just seems like there was a lot of effort put into the flower graffiti bandit.
Well, there was a lot of publicity.
But, but they, they said since late September, these, these three departments have worked together.
But just going off of Leeds, I mean, they would do the same of other things. And then they were lucky that he was just walking on foot after he immediately had, someone had observed him doing that. But I understand what you're saying.
That's what it seems like. It seems like they're spending all this time.
That it looks like, oh, my gosh, you spent all this time and easily apprehended them. I understand the optics, but it's not necessarily the case.
Yeah, it's just, you know, I, I don't know what more we can do. I mean, I think it's going to get to the point where something bad's going to happen. Someone in effort to defend their property, you know, that, that's probably what's going to happen. I mean, and it's going to be somebody like me, you know? So...
I hope it doesn't.
I think we need to take a hard look at the, the crime in the town and the theft, you know, especially, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a good idea for a topic.
I'm sorry, will you use one of these microphones? That one's not working. So...
Paul Koskovich, I, I think the, you know, the, the chief who's usually here takes a lot of direction from you guys, though, right? So I guess is, is it, is it, I'm asking you guys to get involved. You know, is it, is it, they don't have enough staff because they don't have the funds from this, this team right here?
No, they have funds and they have staff. I wish people would stop saying that.
I'm asking. I'm not saying, I'm asking.
Okay. They get seventy percent of this city's budget. Seventy percent.
I, I'm, I'm aware of that, right? And, and we all know that.
How much more can we give them and don't operate?
Because, because, because I don't know if this staff directed your...
No, we don't.
Social media person to, to put those stats up last week, you know, trying to defend where the property taxes are going. So everyone knows, right? And a lot of, a lot of citizens were...
No, I brought that up because I kept hearing it, and I had citizens ask me, are you guys cutting the fire department's budget? Are you cutting the PD? I'm like, why? They said, well, we're hearing, we're going to get them fully funded. I said, no, they're fully funded. They don't get denied anything when they come for budget and CIP. Never. They got declined one time in the six years I've been on this council for an administrative...
I think they got, I think they tried just six months ago, but that's neither here nor there, but either way.
They did, for an assistant chief, an administrative one.
That got denied, right?
But...
That was fire, but yeah.
I mean, that was fire, not police, but it was because they had already split that job into two captains' jobs. So the mayor asked them, you're going to give up the captain job and have this, or you're going to keep it? So they chose to keep the two captains instead.
All, all I'm saying is, is I realize that the labor force, fire, police, streets that, that comprises a majority of our tax budget, but maybe it's not enough. And maybe reallocating funds that we're recklessly spending on other items and putting it into those positions so that we can protect our city and get these meth heads and thieves under control. But I'm not going to take much time on that. I only got... heads and thieves under control. But I'm not gonna take much time on that. I only got so many minutes here. Uh, the, the reason I'm here, I was here a couple of weeks ago. We talked about, uh, the, uh, property tax abatement, uh, under the development agreement that, uh, Ben and I were offered for our project at 2400 Third Street. And after I left, uh, I, I thought about it some more. I was actually hoping to hear Dan, if you had time to review and, you know, you had said at that time you were waiting to hear some feedback from Renee. But I wanted to comment about what, uh, 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 Alex and Matthew had said, uh, two things. You know, Matthew had said that you had talked to city staff and said I was unresponsive. And I wanted to comment on that. I actually had a meeting with them. Uh, Renee, uh, I don't remember who else, Gordon maybe, or Chris, but I was there. And, uh, they did give me a form I need to fill out, but I can't fill that out until we're done with the project. So I'm definitely not unresponsive. We got permits on the project. Daryl's went through it. We're, uh, we're moving forward. So I, I don't think that's true. The second thing I wanted to comment on was Alex, you had said that, uh, you know, on top of echoing, you said the mayor and saying that you wanna support downtown projects, which, I mean, I don't think you guys all got elected by your constituents saying that the only, the only concern about downtown projects. But I think that's just a personal vision, maybe of some members of this staff. But I don't think that really, uh, represents what this city is looking for necessarily from every position of the citizen. But anyways, Alex, you had said, the other thing you had mentioned that you said that, uh, you guys really want scratch coming in, was the comment you used, you know, funds coming in. So I went back and looked and the project that Ben and I have, the abatement that we're seeking is for, uh, additional improvements to the project, not for what's existing. So this project is gonna continue bringing in $22,000 of scratch a year for the city, whether we get this abatement or not. We're trying to get an abatement that is in comparison and equal to other downtown projects, which was, uh, 100%, 75%, sometimes 100% 10 years, sometimes 100% 15 years. But this depends on which downtown project you're talking about. But our project is gonna continue to bring in $22,000 a year in scratch for the city. And we're just trying to get an abatement on the additional improvements that we're improving on. So I'm curious how that doesn't reason to equate to a, an abatement that you're offering, the old KCAU 9 building down there that is getting 100%, seven years, no taxes, and then three more years of 75% and they're bringing in zero scratch for eight years?
You want me to respond now?
Sure, that'd be wonderful.
Okay. So after you came up and talked about all of that, this last meeting, I, I do like to do my homework and get the figures. And so I worked with city staff, I crunched some of the numbers, pulled different numbers to look at the various projects, what we've been able to do to incentivize them, and the amount of money or taxes that they're going to be generating, right? Cause in my mind, if you're gonna incentivize something at a high level, like 100%, gosh, I really want it to, once that goes to fruition, once that goes through, that that is going to be generating a lot of money for the community. And if it's possible, I mean, whether it's the property tax that's being abated, that perhaps even while the property tax is being invaded, abated, there's still money being generated by the project. And I'll give you two examples, okay? So the first one we were talking about that day was, um, the project on the old Lamb Theater. So I thought about it. And I thought, gosh, well, what, if we're doing 100% on that, on its property tax, what additional money would be raised by doing that project? And so I thought about it and I was, I forget if it was 17 units in that, or how many units were going, I forget the number of units that were going in there. But we're talking about one bedroom, two bedroom, I forget if there were three bedroom, um, uh, living spaces in there. So imagine that each of those individuals now is living in our downtown. Maybe they're relocated, maybe they're new to the community, but they're going down there and they're gonna generate sales tax and money by spending more money in our downtown, or the fact that it's going to have a restaurant and potentially a brewery on, or retail on the main. That's gonna create new jobs. It's also going to bring more people in to generate more sales tax and more money being spent in the community. And so then you look at that and it says, okay, well, if the property taxes are getting abated, look at all the other tax that will be generated, or the people and potential that can move to our community and create more jobs. And so I look at that offsetting, because to your point, when you were running for city council, you said, well, we need to lower taxes, we need to lower taxes. Well, you can't lower taxes if you continue to give more away and fight for more projects to get more money away without seeing how they're offset. And so I looked at the money that's being spent on this and said, yeah, I'm not really comfortable with 100%, but at least I know that it's, has potential to bring new people to live in our community that are going to be not only paying sales tax, but also each of those individual units will pay a water and utility rate. And they potentially will be going out to eat or doing things in a various downtown, shopping, wherever in the community. And so, and then I compared that to, I mean, two different properties. But let's look at one of your properties. So one of your properties that you recently, um, did, which I've commended you for, I think it's a beautiful property, is the indoor storage facility on Houlihan Run. So I remember when, um, that, it's the, the rebate started in September of this last year. And so when you went through and you were working with city staff, the minimum assessment was gonna be $8 million. It's a huge project. I get it, that is a huge project. And building that was a huge endeavor. And it looks great. But as far as the number of jobs that it created, minimal if best. I don't think there's any additional plumbing or sewer hookups for each of the individual units, so it's not generating money there. People are not moving here for additional storage units. So I don't think that's working. And over the course of the life of what you negotiated in your rebate, in order to get an indoor storage facility that's not really bringing in the other revenues, you negotiated, and I believe it was 10 year, over the period of 10 years-
Five years, 75% pal.
Five years.
I wanted 10 years and Bob said no.
Okay. That's great. So five years of 75-
Let me remind you that it takes three votes for anything in this council. It does not what Bob said.
Well, hold on, cause, hold on, cause I'm getting, hold on, cause I'm getting to the exciting part. So then, okay, I stand corrected. I didn't have the period of time. I knew it was 75 and that you were pushing for 100. So on a project that's generating questionably almost any tax revenue for the city, or money coming in, at the end of the life of those five years, that project is saving a million dollars by us having a storage facility that we're not charging you for taxes. And if that, that's taxpayer dollars. We're incentivizing just a million dollars for a storage unit. And so we have to weigh those things. Where is money coming in? How is it being generated? And I, for one, would much rather have one where people are going to be moving into a, a new facility, or maybe going to restaurants, going shopping. Maybe they just got a job. Maybe they're graduating from college and they wanna stay in the community and they would like to live in downtown. I don't know, but I know that it will generate more money.
Let me give you some education, ROI pal. That land before I started was bringing in how much to the city in tax base? $3,000, okay? In five years, when my abatement's up, it's bringing in $295,000 a year. What's that ROI bud? What's that ROI man?
I'm just saying. Do we need to incentivize those businesses?
Holy smokes, man. You don't understand ROI. If that's not good for the city, that is why business people need to be on this council. You're uneducated. I'm insulted.
There are a lot of projects that we need to incentivize.
Back to this downtown, cause I can't reason with that. So we're gonna talk about, no, real quick. We're gonna talk about this downtown and how you want people to come shop. We have the Badgero, empty.
That's not true.
Oh, we have a gym that it services its tenants. Great call. We have the Warrior-
And I'm pretty sure it's almost full.
No, it's not. I walked through it.
With tenants.
We, it, listen, you guys keep pushing retail downtown. You just told me people wanna come downtown and shop. So again, the Warrior, the Warrior, half empty still. The Benson Building, empty. This new building, you're saying it's gonna have all this stuff. Why would it have that when the Benson has across the street, Steve can't get anyone in it? People don't wanna be downtown, because you folks can't work with the police department and take care of this homeless problem and meth head problem and crime problem. I mean, when will this council stop looking at what the downtown has, when your constituents and the public aren't always about downtown? But I am insulted that you don't understand how 3,000 to 295,000 isn't good for this city.
No, I'm not saying it's not.
You just degraded the project.
Oh?
Yes, you did, because it doesn't create jobs. What it does is creates tax base.
I didn't degrade your project.
If I can do that project, it would still be coming, bringing in $3,000 into this city. That is such an ignorant comment.
Hey. Appreciate it.
Think we've gone long enough.
When can I talk more than about this abatement we're getting? Cause again, I'm just not satisfied with it. I don't understand that it's not, it's, it's not resonating-
Guess what, Paul? This, here's how it works. We all get, got elected so we can vote on it and we're gonna vote what we think is the best. And for you to stand there and tell me I don't care about other areas of the community is a bunch of bull. I'm the guy that fights all the time with this council about, you're gonna treat Leeds and we're gonna treat Riverside, we're gonna treat Peters Park, just like we treat the downtown. They get it all the time. They don't, they'll all tell you that.
Then if that's the case, then why don't you treat the abatement the same way?
Don't tell me I'm all about the downtown, because that's a bunch of baloney.
You are when it comes to the abatement. You told me that. You said that two weeks ago.
I said, that's the only place I vote for 100%. Everywhere else, I treat everybody the same.
But that's what I'm saying, so-
You ask me why I won't go more, cause I don't go more in Leeds, I don't go more in Riverside, so I'm not going more in other areas.
Why don't we get outside the downtown and give the same abatement elsewhere?
You know what, you can agree and we can disagree. But these guys get to vote on it.
I just would like some explanation of the why. Why are we so focused on downtown?
Well, call me and we'll talk.
Deal. Sounds good. Call me when you leave. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Um, I, I will mention, um, every time our police department gets their CULIA certification, um, they, they always comment that they can't believe how well the department operates with the level of staff we have. And they always recommend hiring more staff. And I've always advocated for hiring more police officers. I think they do a great job, um, and I'll continue to advocate for hiring more police officers, because I, I do think that our police numbers need to be higher than what they currently are. And I, I think that would help us a lot. Um, and, and you can look back, every budget session, I've advocated for hiring more police officers, because our, our level of staffing, while they do a tremendous job with the staff that we do have, and I will never say that they don't, um, we do need more officers on the street. And that's everything.
Julie.
I don't have anything today.
Alex.
Well, I was gonna say that I don't have anything, but, um, something Matthew said reminded me of a council memo that we just received, so maybe it will help you at least have a little insight into the staffing. I would share that I'd share your frustration. I remember early on in the, in my career here on the city council, we directed that we wanted a police officer hired solely to patrol downtown. That's it. We just wanted that beat, right? To be able to be focused and working the streets in that downtown area. Um, and fast forward, we had trouble with staffing and being able to adequately get those positions filled. Um, but the example I just remembered reading about, I think it was yesterday when I was reading my homework, um, was talking about that for the positions that we have open right now, we had 75 applications. We used to receive hundreds. We had 75 applications. When it came time to show up and take the test, the exam, so to, that you have to pass in order to go on to the academy, 25 showed up. That's frustrating. Put a lot of time into recruiting staff and workforce. And, and I would just echo Matthew's comments too. I mean, I'm frustrated with that. And I know the chief is infuriated that we go through all of that process to recruit officers and then they just don't show up, which is the problem with a lot of different industries, right?
And we approve the budget to hire the officers.
And we approve the budget. And so, and the other problem is, is that the state of Iowa, Des Moines, they have the academy down there. And we have to send all these officers down there for training. There's no reason we couldn't build and establish a more robust training place here. And we have that. Western Iowa Tech runs a great operation. But no, then they go down to Des Moines for however long, they're away from their family, they're away from their support system, and maybe then they're finding something else down there or being poached for a different job. It's very aggravating.
And we've even expanded our radius.
Correct, to try to address it.
Yes.
But anyway, just thinking about that, Matthew, and what the problem is part of it. That's all I have, Mayor.
More?
A couple of things, Mayor. Mr. Hogan, um, you made a comment that I just want to add my two cents worth, uh, where you had an issue and you said, but that's not our problem. It's, it's really our concern. And I'm glad you made the remarks that you did today, because that is a concern of all of, all of ours. And, and I appreciate, you know, you were saying it's not your problem. I, I think I get what you were saying, but I just want you to know, it's a concern that I have.
I appreciate that. Um, just give a little more background here. So I watch the council meetings every week. I have for years. I'm 27 years old. I don't know how many other people do.
I tell you what, man, come on. There's gotta be something better on.
Well, it's important to know what's going on.
I know, I agree.
So, so I usually, I try to stay out of the spotlight. I just work. But here's why I came down, because, so I had a truck stolen. I bought a building downtown, had it vandalized while we were putting a ton of money into it. I had a trailer stolen. My wife and my niece go to the, um, Pilates studio. I know you guys know what's going on with that. You know, my wife's from Ankeny. I got her to move here, cause I own a business here. My in-laws come here and see our newborn baby boy. And all this is going on, you know? And they're kinda looking at me like, you know what I'm saying?
Like, bring our baby here.
You know what I'm saying?
Yep. I get it.
It's, it's very unsettling.
How did they steal a pickup? Can I ask that?
Well, it's my fault, put it that way. But, but here's the deal. My truck has my name on the side of it. It has a tracker in it. You're not gonna get very far.
Right, 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 right.
Well, you know who it-
I was wondering how they were facilitating it.
Well, they, they got into it and it had a fob inside of it, even though it was locked. It, it has a keypad, so I just leave the fob in it, but they were able to open it.
Okay.
And it's related to the people who ride those mini bikes around town. They, they do this regularly. I don't know if you've seen this on a Ring camera or not. There's kids that, in high school, that steal cars all throughout Morningside all the time.
Yeah, and then they just park it elsewhere. And when it's joyriding, it's not a punishable offense, or I forget, it's like-
Well, that's because our-
Or something. I forget what the inner-
That, that's because our juvenile district-
Attorney?
Attorney charges them with driving without the owner's consent. They do not charge them with grand theft auto.
That's what it is.
And I understand that's not the officer's fault. That's not Chief Mueller's fault. It's not your guys' fault. You know, that's up the ladder.
But we could maybe have a convo and see if we could get that changed.
Well, that'd be great, you know? But I was also told, um, by individuals who are, you know, making women feel uncomfortable at the Pilates studio, that, uh, it's not illegal in Iowa to be nude, or something like that. That's what an officer told, the person who called in. I'm serious, that's what they told him.
I'm pretty sure it is.
Well, I looked it up. I don't have the code, but there is a code. And I also looked up.
And it's interesting.
The city can adopt, yeah, the city can adopt ordinances, you know, further strengthening the code. And I know you guys know what's going on there, right?
Well, I know that shouldn't be the case, cause I will say, I was at the Riverside PAC meeting and for sure, one of them on the list was exactly that happening in Riverside Park and the police did take them.
Well, maybe a park is a different-
Yeah, that could, that could be too.
Ordinance, because it's, you know what I'm saying?
And I knew what you were-
I have no idea what you're talking about, so I'll-
So there's, there's-
I'll find out, that's okay.
I can let him know.
You, you let him know.
Don't make me air blush.
But that, that's-
I just wanted to let you know that it, that it, that it is a concern and I appreciated your comments. So I-
Yeah. Well, I just want you to know, that's why I'm coming down here, cause it's been a lot this year.
Yeah, thank you.
And, you know, it's affected me personally beyond my business, so.
Right. And you should come down.
I do know. Okay, I know what you're talking about.
Thanks.
Um, all right. Next, uh, Mike, Collette can help me with this one, uh, cause I think Jill had to leave. But the short-term rental assistance available, the 104,000 dollars for rent payments. Um, there was something on, in the Sioux City Journal that was actually just taken from the immediate press release. And it said, due to limited funding and anticipated high demand, only fully completed, and fully completed's underlined, applications will be accepted and placed on the waiting list for assistance. Would you know, i- is the application difficult to complete? I, I just, I, I'm concerned that fully completed might, it might reject applications for people that really need it, if it's gonna be a technical rejection, cause it's not fully completed. So I'd like to see one of those applications, if I may. I'll help anyone that I can to fill one out if it's gonna be complicated.
Probably on our-
That just jumped right off the paper at me and the Sioux City Journal went, said fully completed.
I'll, I'll get with Jill.
And I didn't know what that meant. So I think I just, I hope it's not a wage, you know, yeah, there'll- So I think I just, I hope it's not a wage, you know, yeah, there'll be a lot of applications, but that's the economy. That's where we are with the, with the economics of things, so. I just wanted to point that out. And then I don't want to embarrass you, but I, I like when young people come to our city council meetings. And so I didn't know if they were from some group or something. You don't have to say because I don't want to put you on the spot, but I was glad to see the, the younger future voters of Sioux City. Elementary?
Thank you. I was going to speak on rezoning and I didn't have childcare, so I'm like, guys, we're going to see how the civil process works.
Just, just come up to the mic just for a minute, so. So the kids are in elementary school and they got, they got to see us in action.
Yes, so I was going to speak on the, um, rezoning of Jefferson Street, um, and I didn't have childcare, so I said, guys, we're going to see how the civil process works, so.
Thanks for coming back on.
Thank you.
Well, I'll tell you what, they sat through all of this without doing what I would have done in elementary school.
I would say what?
I often speak at third and fourth grade government classes and tell them that sometimes you ask better questions than the adults I talk to, so.
Yeah, I was, I was answering some questions back there, but yeah, they're first and second grade, so thank you for patience with the wiggles.
And the mayor in this council, we, I think we've done a good job when we see, you know, Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts or any, anybody that comes to see our meeting, we oftentimes will have them come back here so we can get a, you know, a photo opportunity with the city council. So, but thank you for sharing that with us.
Thank you.
Sharing the, the children. I have something I want and I should have just told you guys, but it dawned on me. The Public Works Group needs to look at doing a slurry coat of asphalt, Patrick, not asphalt, just the, the stuff you go before you put the asphalt down. Sioux Falls does that. And you don't see the pits in their bridges. The worst thing for a bridge in Iowa is that dank salt. And the only way to keep that salt off is if you put a coating on top. And I don't understand, as cheap as it is to do that, why are we not doing it, Patrick? Do you know? Because Gordon isn't here, I'd ask him, but boy, it looks like their bridges stay a lot better shape than ours. And, you know, we were told you can't lay asphalt on top of them. We, we did that and saved that bridge for quite a while. I don't know why we don't learn that lesson.
Patrick Simons Field Services, yeah, it's something we can definitely look into. I know that they had had discussion about it in the past prior to me being here and I, I don't know what the decision was.
I, I can't imagine the little bit of cost, if that's, if that extends the life of that deck even three or four years, it's worth every penny of it.
Absolutely. Patrick, let's try to get a meeting, you and I and Gordon.
We can look into that.
And I'm glad Patrick's up here because my last thing I commented I wanted to make is I wanted to thank you for the past service you've done and for the future of what's to come. You've done a great job, Patrick.
Thank you very much.
I really appreciate your good work.
Appreciate it.
And, and I think the citizens do too. They openly appreciate what you do, so thank you. That's all I have, Mayor. I'm overly adjourned. Second.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.